I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Brubaker.
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt.
Great. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome to the February 20, 2019 Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Kevin Brubaker. To his right is Board Member Jim Bax. I am Greg Elick. To our left is Board Member and Vice President Annie Karstarfin. To her left is our Board Member, Robotic Man, Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Schloss. And to her left is our Award Winning Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Okay. We're going to start off the meeting with some very special Board recognition today. Amy, would you like to come up here, please?
All right. Thank you, Barry. Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's this?
It's low.
Oh, that's who that is?
It's real low.
I thought these were signed.
It's on.
Okay.
All right. I'll just talk loud. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to host some recognitions this evening. Representing Prospect Elementary School tonight, we welcome Ms. Heather Hale and Andrea Love. Heather is an elementary art teacher and Andrea is an elementary physical education teacher. They're both at Prospect at their home school, but they do travel around to several other schools throughout their weeks. Tonight, we're recognizing Heather and Andrea for their second successful first responders' open house held earlier this month at Prospect. I'm going to invite their Principal, Jeff Barwatzup, to introduce them and to talk about why what they've done is significant.
Great. Amy, I don't think that's on.
All right. It's on.
Yeah, it's on.
Got me? Okay. I have the pleasure tonight of talking about Heather and Andrea are two fantastic individuals as people, as educators, and our district is definitely a better place because of these two. Two years ago, they came to me with a new initiative to host a first responders' open house at Prospect. I said, "Okay, I'm game. Let's see what happens. Let's give it a shot." It started, the planning of all the new safety initiatives and our first responders' open house planning started at the beginning of last year. I think they've given up basically every single lunch and planning time to spend with me. I don't know why. And we've done a lot of work together. They come and they spend their lunches and planning time with me, and we talk about how we can improve safety within the district, with that Prospect. And those conversations have lent themselves into leading us into our first responders' open house, where we have invited all of our first responders within Elyria to come and visit our school and see what it's all about. And truly, this never would have happened without Heather and Andrea. They really are rock stars, and I know it's very rare that you could say that you're so blessed to get to work with such an amazing team, but I get to work with them all the time, so I'm very lucky. We're lucky at Prospect and within our district, and I just want to say thank you both so much for giving everything to this district that you do and for hosting our second successful first responders' open house. Thank you, guys. We'd like to have you guys come up and receive a very prestigious award. The Elyria Schools Golden Apple. This one is for Andrea. And for Heather, we have some certificates for you, and we would like you to please come up and shake the hands of the four members of the board and recognize you guys. For all of your hard work.
Great job, ladies. Thank you for everything. Great job. Thank you for everything. Great job. Great.
We're using it anyway. All right. Up next, we'd like to recognize Heather Beck, our Athletic Director. Heather earned the title of Athletic Director of the Year from the Northeast Ohio Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, otherwise known as N-E-O-I-A-A-A. That organization is recognizing Heather at an awards banquet in April and for holding high standards of sportsmanship and professionalism and for her commitment to students and community. Heather is also receiving the Golden Apple Award.
Wow.
Congrats, Heather.
Heather?
Congratulations.
Great job, Heather.
Heather, would you like to speak further? All right. And last, but certainly not least, is our two-time Award Winning Treasurer and her finance team, as I say your name, please stand, of Ann Holton, Assistant Treasurer, Pete Bailey, Executive Specialist, M.J. LaFleur, Administrative Assistant, and Jen Kelleher, Administrative Assistant. This is the second straight year that the Elyria Schools Treasurer's Office has earned the highest honor in financial reporting, the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. Joy and her team received a very nice plaque from the Ohio Auditor of State, I believe, but even better is tonight's Golden Apple Award.
Oh, the Golden Apple.
So, let's see. Joy, you actually have to get up and walk around this time.
Yeah.
Oh, I do.
They each get their own Golden Apples?
They each get their own Golden Apple.
Three times. Is that out of the Treasurer's budget?
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yes, we approved it for you.
There goes next year's award.
Joy, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say thank you to this fine team that I do have. Their attention to detail, their attention to detail is amazing, and they have all kinds of pride in what they do, and very seldom does anything get missed. And the reason why we can get this award is because of their work skills and their attitude for all the work that they do do.
Great. Good job.
It's good for...
Nice job. Well, we want that job. Good job. Nice job, Joy. Nice job. Good job. Okay, great. Thank you, Amy, for those well-deserved awards, and we'd like to move along on the agenda to other presentations. The Ohio Revised Code 3313.48B states, "Not later than 30 days prior to adopting a school calendar, the Board of Education of each city, exempt village, and local school district shall hold a public hearing on the school calendar, addressing topics that include, but are not limited to, the total number of hours in a school year, length of school day, and beginning and end dates of instruction." The proposed draft 2019-2020 district calendar is attached and has been posted. Adoption of the 2019-2020 calendar will be voted on at the April 3, 2019 Board Agenda. And I believe the only thing that I saw looking at it quickly that was a little bit different is just a couple of days before Labor Day for construction. Any other comments or...
This enables us to work with the construction team for the next year in a need, then it'll end a little earlier, the following June, in order to allow them to do some of the work that needs to be done over the summer so we can open on time.
Okay, great. So, that will be voted on April 3, 2019. Moving along on the agenda, visitor comments. Nobody signed up a week in advance for the 15 minutes, but we did have somebody sign up today for a five-minute talk to the Board, and that is Carol Von Drusla. Did I say that right?
You're close.
Von Druska, sorry. Okay, welcome, Carol.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. Eleven months ago, I was part of the group who invaded this Board Meeting to plead for the Hamilton School. And yea, raw, we get to see the unveiling tonight. I taught at Hamilton, I taught at Franklin, I live in the area, I'm a block away from the Hamilton site, and my kids, both of my sons, went all the way through Franklin and Elyria High. And I went back, I was a part of the Hamilton staff in 1979 when we closed Hamilton, the historic building of Hamilton. And I have all of Connie Davis's articles that she wrote at that point, and I already emailed you, and I believe I emailed Mr. Elick as well. And she mentions that there was a 1,900 block on the facade of the historic building. And I saw in the Chronicle on January 24th where echoes of the current buildings are going to be carried over to the new buildings. And I'm wondering what's going to be done to echo Hamilton and Franklin in the new building, because both buildings are historic. The original Franklin, if I believe, was on the same plot of ground as the Washington Building at the high school area, and when the high school needed more space, the one was built over on 12th Street, or 11th Street, sorry. And I watched the historic Hamilton Building come down the spring of 1983, and I'm wondering what's going to be done, because my guess is that the 1,900 block got ground up with everything else I saw come down. And so, there is a long history for both buildings, and they both deserve to be recognized and incorporated into the new building. So, there is my plea.
Okay. Well, we will actually share this with the design team, and we will see if there's actually anything in the design coming up here, so...
I plan to be watching construction, and I plan to keep bugging you, believe me.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Okay. All right, moving along on the agenda, Board Member Discussion Items. Are there any items Board Members today that we'd like to discuss, bring up?
Just a couple of things. Wanted to give a shout-out to the Middle School Robotics Team 42111N that got recognized in the paper. That was a fantastic performance. And certainly to Mike West and the rest of that coaching team, because they have really done a great job with that program. That is fantastic. And as well as a wrestling team. What do I see here? It finished, placed fourth in Division One State Duels or State Tournament. That's very good. But that team is ranked, just for the note, that this team is currently ranked, this wrestling team is ranked 25th in the nation. So, that is pretty significant for that group, and there are certainly wrestlers within that group that are ranked higher than that. And so, that's really good. Who else did we see here? Angela Kegel is working on, wanted to give her a shout-out for her performance, her diving performance. She's now, as well as the freestyle relay teams, the boys and the girls relay team, so that, haven't had heard much, you know, we don't hear much about the swimming program, but, you know, it's nice that it's alive and well and performing. That's great. But that was it.
Okay. Now, at the next Board Meeting, I think we're probably due for another update on all the construction. Mr. Bax, being our liaison, will you be able to give us an update kind of where we are with the different construction? So, we'll plan on that at the next meeting.
Very good.
Wonderful. Any other items from the Board? With none, we'll move along to the minutes. The minutes from the January 29, 2019, and the February 6, 2019 minutes have been posted. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Karstarfin. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Brubaker. Any discussion, questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Treasurer Action Items. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first item is to accept the financial report for the month of January 2019, which includes all bank reconciliations, the investment report, the cash balance report, and the appropriation and expense reports as detailed in enclosure G1. Number two is to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the gifts and donations as listed in your agenda. Number three is to approve the list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in G3. And those are my items this evening.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Treasurer Action Items?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Gebhardt to have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Bax. Questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Any other Treasurer Reports today, Madam Treasurer?
No, but if we can continue on to the OFCC.
Okay.
Number two is to approve the Program of Requirements, the schematic design, the design development, and the construction document submissions, and AVG to continue in the construction phase for the Hamilton Building as recommended by the Treasurer. Number three is to approve the Program of Requirements and the schematic design submissions, and AVG to continue in the next design phase for Eastern Heights as recommended by the Treasurer.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve all four phases for Hamilton? And do I have a similar motion to approve the first two phases with the OFCC for Eastern Heights?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Brubaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Karstarfin. Questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Well, let's see it here.
Okay. So, we're trying to do this a little differently. But what we get to see tonight is the architecture, the architectural rendering of Hamilton.
Drum roll.
And keep in mind that this is an architectural rendering. This is hardcore. So, there's a variety, there's a variety of features. It is a 58,000-square-foot building. This is, this lower view is the view from 13th Street. This upper view would be the view from Middle Avenue.
So, the upper is Middle Ave?
The upper, the upper is Middle Avenue. This is 13th Street.
Okay.
Okay? And in addition to that, there's an aerial, there's an aerial view that gives you an idea of how that will sit on that property, okay?
It's easier to see.
So, yeah, it's always kind of nice to get at least a, like I say, a drawing and a rendering out here, because it gives you an opportunity to start to put some meat on those bones in terms of all the things we've been hearing, what we're talking about. And so, this is a lot of the first step when you first conceptualize the structure, and there's still obviously a lot of approval statements and a variety of things to do, but we'll be seeing this in the Eastern Heights as well as the ones we can, but with this, and I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to detail a little bit about...
I just want to say one thing. What I really like about this is the architectural aesthetics mirror the first two schools and the high school really nicely, yet there's that one area that stands by itself, the gray-yellow kind of accent. And as I was talking with Mr. Brubaker here, you know, back in the day, for some people that remember, Jefferson used to wear yellow uniforms. Now, I don't know if that's tied in there at all, but I do like how there's a little bit different that kind of ties to the history of that area, just like the Ely facade and the Northwood red, how the architects kind of honored a little bit, and maybe they can actually do something more here, too, with...
Hamilton was red.
I'm sorry?
Hamilton's color was red.
Hamilton's color was red.
Yeah, they were saying Jefferson.
Franklin, I thought. No, I'm talking about the Jefferson uniforms, not Hamilton, so... But anyways, that was just my thought.
Sure. I'm going to stay here so that everyone can hear, especially the video, but just wanted to give you a little preview, and I apologize for my voice. The kiddos have finally given me their cold for the year. Wonderful inside, wonderful things inside the building that are going to be, I mean, what a lovely picture of the outside, but more importantly, what's going to happen on the inside as far as the uniqueness of 21st century learning. And wanted to bring about the idea of studios. I think in the past, some of you have heard us call them pods, but now we're calling them studios and/or suites. We're trying to keep up with the terminology change over the years, but what it allows us to do, in my opinion, is meet the needs of students on a much better scale. For instance, I'm going to give you a scenario. A first-grade studio or suite will be all-encompassing with the gifted teachers, the special education teachers, the parapros, and everyone will be in one suite, as well as, most importantly, at the first grade, the restrooms, in order to be able to keep those kiddos in one area for their learning and be able to meet their needs where they can move about into what we call an ELA, an Extended Learning Area, where if a teacher is reteaching a lesson and the students have already mastered that concept, they can move into the middle and maybe go into the maker's space or something of that nature within the ELA. So, the beauty of the way we're designing these buildings with AVG is that we're going to be able to better meet the needs of students without having them travel all over the building to go into a pullout situation. Also, which what we have promised from the get-go of passing this bond issue is that these are community centers also. And the way they're designed, they have what's called a spine. When we're down the middle, you will see more of the, what we call art-music PE areas, the health center, the cafeteria, the community rooms. The office will be centrally located in this building. Obviously, there'll just be one office, because it's just up through 4th grade, but that is where the public can come in, whether they're parents or community members, and we are able to close the doors of the suites and keep the little ones, you know, away from meetings or something that we might have out in a general area. So, the uniqueness, and we're going to come later on and talk a little bit about safety and security and the upgraded technology, but the way these are designed are going to afford us to better meet the needs of all students, and I think teachers are going to enjoy the collaborative nature of being able to co-serv in a very unique way. But excitement, I mean, it's just really a neat way to bring them out and see these buildings. I do love the way they match the beautiful high school and the consistency, yet each one has their unique element. So, that's a little bit about the inside.
Great. Other Board Members?
Mr. President, through you to Ms. Schloss, just for verification purposes, this building is scheduled to open at the same time that the Northwood and the Ely campuses in 2020.
Fall of '20. Mm-hmm. Fall of '20.
Beautiful design. I think the Core Team did a wonderful job. I appreciate everybody here that's on the Core Team that has helped with this. Other comments, Board Members?
Just one more, through you to Jake. Do we have a timeframe on where we're going to see some dirt moving over there? Or some fencing?
March.
Yeah, I think as the weather breaks.
Okay.
We're getting ready to go out to bid soon. So, once we get those contractors in line, we should be out for the bid here any time soon, but basically, it comes down to when the weather breaks and then we get out there, we'll start to see dirt.
Okay, thank you. Great, super. Other questions, comments?
It's just exciting.
Great, very exciting time, very exciting time. Okay, moving along on the agenda. Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, Action Items.
Thank you, President Elick. I have the following Superintendent Action Items for your approval. First of all, as we have done in the past, provided transportation for these students to other, in this case, academies. Also, to approve the purchase of network hardware from CDWG at the cost not to exceed the specified amount. This, I would like to mention, is part of the E-Rate program, which we get back 80% from the government. So, Mr. Kokai does a great job of making sure we're on top of this. Also, to approve the Internet Access Service Agreement. This is our new three-year contract with Meta to provide the technology needed. To approve the purchase order for CDWG to replace cyber-acoustic headphones. With a lot of the new programs we have, we need these headphones for students to be able to work on the programs, and it's replacing some of them that have worn out. And this concludes my items under Superintendent's Actions.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve the action items for the Superintendent?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstarfin. Any questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, any other items today? Superintendent Other Items?
No, no Superintendent Other, but I do have some Personnel Action Items for your approval.
Okay.
First, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff. Also, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. We are now up to 81 substitute teachers.
Oh, okay.
So, moving along, we had some December grads. Also, to approve the payment for up to five days for the following employee at the daily rate. Jackie Plantner runs our early childhood center, and she comes in in the summer and does tours for prospective parents and answers questions and does paperwork for licensing. So, also, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts for the following certified staff. We have some game workers that need to be approved for athletic services, and unpaid leave of absence for classified staff, as well as the appointment of new classified staff who has dual roles. That's why you see there isn't a name missing. This person is going to sub in both areas.
Okay.
We also have to approve the one-year limited contract for the following classified staff as listed below, and to approve the classified limited contracts as listed below. As you know, there's been some changes with contracts that we've had to make sure we note them differently in the agenda, so... And that is all I have for, oh, I'm sorry, one more. To approve the appointment of the following security officers. These are the five new police officers that were sworn in a couple of weeks ago from the Elyria Police Department. And that concludes my recommendations.
Great. Could I have a motion to approve the Superintendent Personnel Action Items?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Brubaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Karstarfin. Any questions, comments? Great. Could I have a motion to approve the superintendent personnel action items?
So moved.
Motion by board member Brubaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by board member Karstoffen. Any questions, comments?
We do have one person in attendance.
Okay. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. And Jamie, are you going to announce our new addition?
Good evening. We have Andrea Barlow. She is going to be a lunch monitor at Ely. So, welcome to our Pioneer Campus.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, a superintendent report today.
Just a few things. I, I'm not going to list them all, but please look at our website or call the high school. We have a lot of tournament action coming up, whether it be basketball, swimming, diving, bowling, wrestling, you name it, we could probably have it for you. Also, do want to give a shout-out to Amy Higgins, the new calendar. What a wonderful display of what I would consider best team around of principals and, and what they do for students. So, beautiful job on that, Amy. And those should be in the mail or already received. All right. And then, also, announcement Dynacal, which is a new scheduling software where the public is going to be able to see availability of some of our areas within the district and sign up for building permits, is going to go live on March 1. We've been testing it out through the, the facilitation of Jake Carmaney and it, it's going to be really ni, a nice feature for all of us to use and streamline some old archaic ways of paper work. So, and that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thanks, Madam Superintendent. Board of Education, we have 12 new sections posted for the first reading. I need a motion to approve the first reading of the 12 sections posted of the board policies.
Moved to approve.
A motion by board member Beck, second by board member Gebhardt. Any questions?
Yes. I was, as I was reviewing these qualifications and duties of the treasurer, I see in the section labeled additional working conditions. There's a, there's a notation in that that mentions occasional interaction among unruly children. And in your particular situation, I said, is that, is that in reference to the board? If so, I, if so, I object. But, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't quite understand. Have you ever had that, that type of interaction?
We can arrange it.
Okay. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. We do not have an executive session planned for today, so I would like a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.